Okay. Well, that way if I said something later today, it's gonna be in the paper tomorrow. We talked about it.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I got a...
I'm gonna get another one. I've got a finished sheet.
Why would I also do that? We can hold a simple headed.
I'm thinking of doing anything.
That way you don't want to have to do it. And also therapy. And then call it a year. It was a mix of things.
Yeah, and that's what all I gotta do is just, um...
Well, I was gonna flip it, but...
So I see if you...
Down he goes.
Okay.
This is in my... Why would you let air... Why don't you open it for air? It's gotta see what people... Hello? Unless you're someone... Hello, sir. Yeah. Still ordered by... Yeah.
I love our shows. It was Sunday night.
Hello, sir. It's a letter. Hey, what's up? Yes, sir. The change is not...
Thank you, sir.
You have a thing after lunch.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Crater, would you do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. All your privilege, would you do this at any location?
Yes, I pray by the head. I would like to come to you right now, first of all, my Father, saying thank you that you allowed us to see another day. Now, my Father, we come around this round table with the nine councilmen of the mayor to try to let you ask for wisdom and guidance to do what's right for the city of Crowley, my Father, and therefore our... We ask all this in Jesus' name and pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We'll call down twice.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
Brad Corr?
Here.
Mike Crater?
Here.
Val Fobin?
Here.
Brian Martin?
Here.
Stephen Prunow?
Here.
Sammy Rady?
Here.
And Stringfeller?
Here.
And Robert Lewis?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please read them, please?
You are hereby notified that a special council meeting of the mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Crowley will be held on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers at 426 North Avenue. The purpose of said meeting will be to consider ordinance 1511 and ordinance adopting, finalizing, and implementing the annual operating budgets of revenues and expenditures for the City of Crowley for the fiscal year beginning September 1, 2020, and ending August 31st, 2021, to provide for all matters relative thereto and to repeal all ordinances, enforcement ordinances, inconsistent or in conflict therewith. The notice of call was posted at City Home on October 19th, 2020, at 2:00 p.m., and the call was circulated and delivered.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get into the meeting and agenda amendments, there is a speaker card filled out by Mr. Lee Lawrence on behalf of Acadia Parish Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm here because Amy Thibodeau and our chairman were detained elsewhere because they did not realize we're gonna have a meeting tonight. So I get to do this further. This is dear City of Crowley Alderman and Mayor. This year has been an extremely difficult one, which no one could have predicted. Two hurricanes in the midst of a pandemic have put citizens and businesses in a position where they're having to make very difficult choices. While we do not believe the council and mayor must agree on every issue, we are appealing to both parties to put differences aside and function more cooperatively and in a spirit of compromise. The Acadia Parish Chamber of Commerce, on behalf of all its business constituents, encourages the Crowley City Council and Mayor to approve a budget for the current fiscal year. Failure to approve a budget will have catastrophic effects, as we all know, not only on the City of Crowley, but for the entire parish, since Crowley is the economic home. We ask also that you consider the public image being created by your actions or failures to act and the headlines and reporting that ensues. Our news is read throughout the parish and beyond. Moreover, prospective businesses and prospective residents that do research on digital media before relocating are not seeing a good picture of all of us. As you know, we have hundreds of acres along I-10, subject to potential development, and we never know when we're being passed over for a location that has a more positive image. We all know Acadia Parish is a gem with countless resources available to sustain and strengthen our success. Crowley is the economic hub of the parish. We believe that brighter days are ahead for all of us. We all call Acadia Parish home, and we all desire its growth and prosperity. We appeal to our elected Alderman and Mayor to finally put this budget issue behind and seek out a more constructive way of working together in the future. Sincerely. And I have copies that could be distributed. And I wanted to, if I could, also just make a comment, just as a citizen, not as a chamber executive committee member, but just as a citizen. It'll be great. I think you all are all well-intentioned, although, and I mean this with all due respect, there tends to be some grandstanding, and some seem to enjoy the microphone, and some seem to like to guess the last word on every issue. Having talked to some of the veteran council members, it seems that some Aldermen want to run the city like a business, with something like monthly profit and loss statements, balance sheets, et cetera. This council is not a private corporate board, and my opinion doesn't need to wade into the detail of the finances on a monthly basis. That's the job of the mayor and his administration, and I'm sure that he knows that he must be held accountable. I understand that in the past, it was the mayor's job to put forth the budget, then report quarterly to the Finance Committee and Council on variances, and any need for amendments as relates to either projected tax receipts or differences in expenses. Each committee chair and committee at its monthly meeting has an opportunity to work with the administration on its respective committee budget items. The committee can then make recommendations to the council for amendments. To me, the council is devoting an inordinate amount of time to the administrative aspects of the city administration, particularly the budget. It seems that you have varying opinions and certainly objections, but your several meetings have yet to... You have yet to present an amendment or offer one. Bottom line, I'd just like to encourage you to spend more time on broader policy issues and topics that relate to the progress of our city, and I hope you'll pass the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord. All right. Move on to the agenda. Agenda... Agenda amendments?
Mayor? Yes, Alderman Corr. I'd like to move to the amended agenda prior to the council's consideration of ordinance 1511, intended to the 2020-2021 proposed budget, to introduce a resolution for the engagement of a certified public accountant, CPA, by the City of Crowley.
Moved by Mr. Corr, seconded by Ms. Stringfeller. Discussion?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, I'd like to provide the council and the public with an understanding of my concerns and solutions for a passage of your budget, and I would like to read excerpt from my letter dated October 15, 2020, that I wrote to you. Dear Mayor Monso, in order to move forward with my approval of the fiscal 2021 operating budget, I'm requesting amending ordinance 1511 to include the following items. Prior to the January 2021 council meeting, the city will engage a certified public accountant, CPA, specialized in municipal accounting, as a consultant, to perform the following tasks during the fiscal year. One, review and provide recommendations to the administration regarding the city's financial accounting. Two, prepare or approve monthly financial statements for review by the council. Three, prepare or approve monthly balance sheet for review by council. Four, prepare or approve a recap of budget transfers as they occur for the review by council. And five, prepare or approve budget amendments for review by council. In following up on my request, today, I had the pleasure of meeting with the mayor and city clerk to discuss my requests, and was informed that all items can be accomplished by adopting the resolution tonight at this meeting. Thank you.
Hello? Mr. Martin?
Uh, do you have said a resolution in front of you?
No.
For the record, I'd like the resolution read for the public as well to put it in our time, the City of Crowley.
Okay. Do you'd like the resolution read before the vote?
Yes. They tell that everything is satisfactory to what you said and what we have discussed.
Mayor, we'd like to point out one minor regret within the fourth paragraph of the body of the resolution, which paragraph means with there. Now, therefore, be it resolved, at the end of that paragraph, where it states, "including but not limited to," colon, before the colon, I would like to include the word "monthly." Off of a colon, and then continue as written, and then after number four, "mayor's report in parentheses, budget analysis," before the semicolon, shall read, "for review by council."
All right. Is it it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. If you don't mind, I'll have to try to read the resolution is... And pardon?
A resolution of the mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Crowley, Acadia Parish Louisiana, authorizing the engagement of a consulting certified public accountant on an annual basis, authorizing the mayor to execute an annual engagement letter with the CPA to provide annual consulting services and to provide for all matters related thereto, whereas the City of Crowley has a multi-million dollar budget which is complex and subject to special rules and regulations applied to governmental entities, and whereas the assistance and guidance of a certified public accountant, CPA will be beneficial to the City of Crowley in providing advice and suggestions regarding budgeting practices and consulting services to staff and preparation and management of the budget, as well as to reduce errors and inconsistencies and improve accounting practices of the City of Crowley, and whereas the mayor and Board of Alderman invited in the best interest of the City of Crowley to annually engage the CPA for such services. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Crowley, Acadia Parish Louisiana, in special session duly convened pursuant to notice thereof have been duly posted in accordance with the law that they do hereby adopt the policy that the City of Crowley shall annually engage in the services of a qualified certified public accountant to provide advice, consultation, and services to staff with regard to preparation and management of annual budgets, maintaining accurate books and records, improving accounting practices, and ensuring compliance with rules and regulations applicable to generally accepted accounting principles and accounting principles applicable to governmental entities, including but not limited to monthly journal reports, balance sheets, profit and loss statements, and mere reports in analysis for review by council. And be it further resolved that the Honorable Tim Monso, Mayor of the City of Crowley, is hereby authorized and empowered and directed on an annual basis to engage a qualified certified public accountant for such services through an engagement letter providing for all terms, conditions, and acceptable competitive rates for such services as may be appropriate in this sole discretion. Thus done and adopted in a special session duly convened on the 20th day of October 2020, pursuant to notice thereof duly posted and noted issue, and filed in accordance with the law in Crowley, Acadia Parish, Louisiana, and this is the one that's presented, Max.
Point of order. Yeah. Okay, unless y'all have it into y'all's favor. Unless you read, read, I'm sorry. And I go back to it. Okay. Applicable to government entities involved, including but not limited to their own balance sheets. Uh, it's not written here to be reviewed by council. Unless y'all have it in the notes. She just read something that's not... It's not here. Okay, that's what I'm saying. So basically, uh...
And Eric, you read that in your...
I added it when you...
Yes.
Okay, so that's... That was your amendment?
Yes.
Okay. I just have one other question. Whether any numbers changed in this letter for whatever reason? No notes?
Nope.
Because as you know, it's the same number as you... Okay, well, I'm just speaking as I recommend. You proved it to the laws and acts. If there's one now, one penny change in this budget that we had the public hearing for? This starts all over.
There's none, Mr. Martin.
Same.
You have the same budget that's been proposed?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Now, since you read that, we're still here for the agenda. All right, so now, we have question. Mr. Fobin?
I would just like to point out to everyone that what's being discussed right now is in direct conflict with what Mr. Lawrence just recited to each and every one of us. That's all. This is our job.
Okay, next. Uh, first of all, we need to vote on the agenda, the amended agenda. That's what we need to vote on right now. Okay? I move ahead, Bob. Second? All in favor?
Right.
Opposed?
Right.
Okay. Now... Yes. Now the agenda amended. Brad did give... Mr. Corr, you did give a description of the amended agenda.
Yes.
All right. Now, now we're working, and we're gonna vote on the resolution. Okay? Okay, it's two, two. I still pick. Okay. Okay. Wasn't getting attention, my apologies. I have to have a unanimous vote to amend the agenda. And I do not have a unanimous vote on the agenda amendment.
Uh, Mr. Fobin, though, and Mr. Lawrence, my intent is not to micromanage the city. My intent is obtain information from someone who is qualified, present to me, shall I know that that information has been reviewed and considered appropriate by an independent person, CPA qualified. I'm not a CPA. I have no intention to look at this information and to direct the mayor or the council to make any recommendations or changes. I simply want information from the CPA, and certainly the CPA to assist our clerk and staff with the accounting that's been overwhelming to them. So this is not an attempt to, by any means, certainly bend the mayor's authority or to advise the clerk and the staff how they should handle accounting. This is just purely transparency purposes and for me to make an informed decision when we do have to make budget amendments and so on.
I'd like to inject my, uh... My agreement, okay? The reason why CPA is so important, because they give us true numbers. Okay? You're dealing with, what is it, the ECPA and other budget? Is that what? Until a CPA puts his signature on this, as far as I'm concerned, it's not true fix. I've been on this council long enough to know that there has been a lot of discrepancies. When we had our talk, these are members that had, uh, was put forward, had conditions to... So, whatever the reason is, it's not a unanimous vote. I had questions on even the legality of this meeting. Since it wasn't put inside our adjournment. But knowing the laws and act as I do, long as there's no numbers, that's to be my question of there was one penny change, it starts all over. Counsel, I know I had agreed when Brad called, and I want to thank him for all the work that he put into it. When you're representing people other than yourself, that cannot be here for whatever reason it is, there's no such thing as grandstanding. It's putting your thoughts out for public hearing. So to be blunt, and you know, I don't have no problem being blunt, we have a situation here that since this amendment is not going through, that's cool for second thoughts right there. Thank you.
Mr. Crater?
Well, I hate to admit to this, but I did read some Facebook post over the weekend, and... And if you can believe what Facebook says, I know the person that posted it was, or is, the municipal CPA for Liberia and I think a couple of other cities. And when she chimed in on a post that was posted over the weekend, she said, and correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody else saw it, that it will be a requirement that municipalities have a CPA, hired CPA, coming up very shortly. And if that's the case, I think that, you know, instead of us following everybody, maybe we can actually do something before it's required. But that was her post, and I pretty much take her word for it, that it will become a requirement for municipalities. So why don't we do it now if it's gonna help pass this budget instead of waiting? That's my hope.
Mr. Fobin?
I respect what you said, Clint, completely. What I'm having trouble with is this is a contingency to pass this budget. Yes, it is, isn't it? Well, I've been sitting here listening. Is it a contingency that this be adopted, in order for this budget to be adopted? This budget has been prepared for seven weeks now since it's been revised. My knowledge, nobody said a word about it until the meeting we had last week. And now we're coming forward again tonight with another, well, with a contingency. I will... This resolution must be passed before we vote on the budget. Everything you're asking for is readily available. All you have to do is ask for it.
Oh, you get it before...
I'm not talking to you, Steph.
I'm talking to you.
I'm not talking to you.
Order, please. I'm talking to you. Order.
Everything you're asking for is readily available.
And give us, Fobin, I'm not an accountant, I'm not a specialist in that. I just want an independent...
I'm not disputing that. I would even go in favor of...
We have a city engineer and a city attorney that specialize in the thing.
But just realize something, Brad. This city has operated for decades as it is now. And now, all of a sudden, this seems to be a problem. The job of the budget is the mayor and the clerk, and we are to oversee. And we will be informed when budget deficits fall into play, which then gives us the prerogative to amend the budget. I'm not opposed to a CPA, but I'm opposed to all of these rules and requirements that are being attached to pass a budget that should have been passed three months ago. And that's my only issue with this. I don't understand it. I just don't understand the complexity with accepting the budget to keep this city from falling into state auditors' hands, where they've already started calling the city, and we've already started potentially losing finances for different projects that are at hand. And now we have another contingency to pass the budget? No, I don't think it's right. And I just, I think it's time...
I don't know.
Maybe I'm wrong. I just feel like I just need to stay on this.
I understand, but I understand too that I have read out my position...
I understand what you've laid out. But it's all contingent on passing the budget.
Well, this is what needs to be done for me to approve the budget. It's a solution to passing the budget, in my opinion, ma'am. And again, with one vote, it will kill this entire budget.
I'll be very honest with you. I didn't realize that that would stop this, my voting now. I didn't realize...
You have been in that with us.
Okay?
And I appreciate that, and I love all these...
Yeah, I'm not out to stop the budget.
I want to pass the budget.
It needs to pass.
Hundred, three, a thousand percent.
It needs to pass.
And if you want to reconsider, that would be greatly appreciated.
Well, to amend the agenda, you have to have a unanimous vote.
Well, then I retract my negative, my nay vote, and I'll vote yes, because I'm not out to set the city down, shut the city down. That has already happened long enough in step. I will thank you to keep your mouth shut.
Okay, order. Chief, okay, wait, hold up. Mr. Martin, hold on. Mr. Martin, Mr. Fobin, order, please. I will ask you... I will ask you, Mr. Martin, please.
Go back to your spot.
Please. Mr. Martin.
You watch yours. You watch yours, please.
Mr. Martin, please. Okay, please. Order, I'm gonna ask for order. I'm gonna ask order for everyone in here. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Captain? Um, no, sir. I'm gonna make this perfectly clear. Please respect the seat that you're sitting in. Maybe if you don't respect, hear me out. Maybe if you don't respect other people, that's your business, but I'm gonna ask you all to please respect the seat that you're sitting in. Please. Okay, you represent people, you represent the City of Crowley. Do it, please, with professionalism, and I'm gonna ask you to do that. And if you cannot do that, then I will have to ask you to leave or be removed.
Can I make my statement, please?
Now you can, yes, sir.
Mr. Fobin, I was about to compliment you on the fact that you misunderstood. Okay? There was no intent to get you to get the rap, stuff like that. But you admitted to yourself. Okay, that takes a big man. I was shaking.
Well, thank God, Steph. I'm good.
I'm off, I'm off the fast stick.
Look, I'm not out to shut the city down.
Well, and I'm...
That's happened long enough.
All right.
Okay.
All right, listen, I have to make my statement, please. Listen, the reason why we...
Now, go ahead.
Okay. Only thing I'm saying is this, and I was about to... Okay, only thing I'm saying is this, and I was about to inject, Stephen is one hundred percent right, we have to go back to the vote.
That's correct.
Okay, we have to go back to the vote, but what I'm trying to make everybody understand, I've been knowing about, play what you said, I've been knowing about this for months, okay? But I just want to see how this council would play out. We are in the process, I'm talking about the state of what we think. CPAs don't have to be in every municipal, I don't care if you're a village, town, or whatever you want to call it, you have to have a CPA to do the books, okay? That's the only thing I've been asking for, our colleague, old woman Springfield, brought it up at the first meeting, if I remember, I think it was the first meeting that we had, in the CPA. What that does, it takes away the doubt on the numbers, alright? Because if the CPA is wrong, guess what, that falls on his farm, not on the city of Crowley. And you had mentioned, and I want to make it clear, that yeah, the budget was given to us a few months ago, but it should have been given to us six months ago to review, okay? One thing I have to say about the previous mayors, we have always had a budget, and Stephen was wrong, you tell me, we had the budget sometimes three months ahead of time that we started reviewing, am I correct in saying?
Normally by the end of June.
There you go, alright, that gave, that gave us time, if we seen something out of the play, before it came down to adoption of the budget, we would sit down and we would discuss, alright? It had, we hadn't been afforded that opportunity. So now, and I understand everything that's going on, I understand the concept, I understand people and lie one hundred percent behind you, look, this is not a contention, it's something each one of us have our own vote, we represent our constituents, right? Once again, I applaud you for putting this together, I'm pretty sure you mixed home call, ugly called me, and he asked me certain questions on it, and I gave him my opinion, alright? So to say that, uh, contention, no, I don't think it's contention, because that's his vote, he said, and if you remember when he said a few minutes ago, that's condition for my votes, he didn't say our vote, okay? I just want to make that clear, he did not use the word our vote, he used his vote, just want to make it clear, thank you.
Alright, so now, we have to have, you know, a vote by Mr. Fogleman. Thank you, Mr. Fogleman, now, I would make a continue. Alright.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so now that would be, that would be amended agenda, now let's move on, make a motion for the resolution, please.
I move to, uh, make a motion for Brad.
I move to, uh, adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
Okay, offered, offered by Mr. Core, seconded by Mr. Martin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, thank you. Now we'll move to number seven. Consider the ordinance fifteen eleven. An ordinance adopting finalizing implementing the annual operating budget of revenues and expenditures for the city of Crowley for the fiscal year beginning September first twenty twenty and ending August thirty first twenty twenty one, and to provide for all matters relative thereto and to review all ordinance of course inconsistent or in conflict therewith.
Offered, seconded.
Offered by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Core, is that, is that a hint?
Yes.
Okay, offered, seconded by Mr. Core, discussion.
Oh, yes. Rule call, boss.
Hold on, immediate, okay, I also, also want you to note, we have to discuss this real quick, that before we vote on this, we have to make sure that everybody understands that this is to be also amended and make effective immediately, so that way we can pay bills.
Yes.
Okay, is that correct? And there is a resolution for it, a new package, you do have a copy.
Well, isn't that administrative, we want to pass the budget.
No, sir, it has to be, it has to be offered through a resolution. Resolution, yes, sir. We are, we are amending the red, we are amending the ordinance with this resolution. So that's what you're offering?
Yes, I can introduce a resolution, which would, uh, provide for the budget to be approved immediately.
Okay?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Springfield, is that under?
No.
Okay, the original ordinance from the beginning, and we are amending it so that way we don't have to wait many, many days ahead, because, yes, immediate adoption, that was correct, yes, sir, okay, that was offered by Mr. Core, seconded by Ms. Springfield, discussion. Now I need a rule call vote. I know we don't have to have it, but I would like to have a rule call vote, please.
Yes, available?
Yes.
Right, four?
Yes.
Clint Crater?
Yes.
Al Fogleman?
Yes.
Bernie Martin?
Yes.
Stephen Primo?
Yes.
Amy Ramsey?
Yes.
And Springfield?
Yes.
And Byron.
Yeah.
All yeas? For the men.
Alright, now that everybody understands that that was to be taken care of, that was to amend it, now we need the ordinance done. An ordinance adopting finalizing and implementing the annual operating budget of revenues and expenditures for the city of Crowley for the fiscal year beginning September one twenty twenty and ending August thirty first twenty twenty one, and to provide for all matters relative thereto, and to review all ordinance of our parts, of ordinance is inconsistent or in conflict therewith.
Mr. Mayor, I so moved.
Offered, offered by Mr. Pavel, seconded by Mr. Wilridge, discussion. Mr. Crater?
Yes, something that concerned me, and I've been thinking about it, that since it was brought up at the last meeting, it was quote unquote said that December second was a drop dead date for fifty percent of the last year's budget. Well, if you do the math, December second is three months, if we're reaching fifty percent of last year's budget in three months, how are we gonna make it the rest of the nine months with this budget? Is this, was, is there a reason why we're reaching this fifty percent of last year's budget so quickly, that, that, it, it's just concerning to me, I don't understand it, and I'd like to understand more if somebody could explain that to us, why, why all of a sudden we're fifty percent of last year's budget on December the second, when we still have nine months left in this, you know, after December second, so there's, there's something's not adding up, and I, it's something that concerns me, is all it is, and people need to be aware of, but I don't know if everybody thought that, but I have to get that and think about it.
Okay, alright, we, I'm gonna answer for you right quick.
I can, I can kind of explain a little bit, first of all, the disaster cleanup and the two projects with disasters has pushed us, everything we've had to spend for disasters has caused an issue with that, also, we're working on fifty percent of last year's budget.
Right.
This street project was not in last year's budget, so that's a big part of the.
Street project money in there.
Right, that's a big part of that, that fifty percent is eating up in the one hundred fund, because that was not budgeted last year in there, so I mean, you got, that was probably four hundred thousand dollars that we paid, the first DRC project was two hundred and some thousand, and then Delta's gonna be even probably more than that, because we have a lot more debris down for this storm than that. And we also found out that it's not overall budget, it's by line items, so some line items are way out and over there fifty percent, but not other line items, but we have to go by line items, which is causing a problem now with the overtimes and emergency overtimes, because we've had two emergencies back to back.
That is correct, and it does dig into your overtime hundred, and we've had two emergencies, like you said, back to back, and, and then there were, again, with these drainage projects, road projects, that are digging into it, they're done, and we're hoping one day that payment will help reimburse some of those emergency projects, but in the meantime, they're reimbursable, we have to pay for them, okay? Ms. Springfield?
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank Mr. Lawrence for coming and speaking. Last week, last Wednesday, Ms. Fontner told us about some deals she made attaining lower prices for services, and I thank her for that information. My only suggestion is that we take that economical attitude into our new budget, that we become good stewards of the citizens' money. Let's pretend this is a, a business, and I know Mr. Lawrence said that he did not care for that idea, but in some respect, we could pretend this is our business and get the best return on our dollar, so we should try to find the best deal for everything out there, put more thought into our spending and our budget, and if nothing else, this delay has made us really and truly think about our budget, talk about our budget, and the citizens have been involved with this process as well, and thank you.
TJ was a citizen, say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Still a citizen?
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Say his name. His mother hasn't heard from him in three days, say his name.
TJ!
He was brutalized by the Acadian Parish Police Department, say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
We're discussing the budget, we need to be talking about paying attention to what's going on in the city outside of, no matter what your skin color is, no matter if you are part of.
Yes, ma'am.
Pay attention, there is too much of a cost that is.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we need to talk about.
No justice?
No peace!
No justice?
No peace!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Now!
We don't get it?
Shut it down!
We don't get it?
Shut it down!
We don't get it?
Shut it down!
Stephen Primo?
Shut it down!
Sammy Lee?
Shut it down!
We don't get it?
Shut it down!
Yes.
Shut it down!
Yes.
Shut it down!
We don't get it?
Shut it down!
Say his name.
TJ!
Oh, oh, record has been done.
Say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
You feel uncomfortable, you shouldn't be, say his name.
TJ!
What you doing, Jerry?
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
Okay, I missed it.
TJ!
I missed it, I missed it.
TJ!
Maybe like you do it.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
All citizens should be worried, say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
TJ!
You leave the building, say his name.
TJ!
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 No matter what you do, I should say his name.
TJ!
Say his name.
Turn it round, turn it round, turn it round, say it for that, nobody, turn it round, we party, we all, 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 we all,